All right. We will reconvene in the meeting of March 27th. Roll call.
The record will reflect that currently council members Rozansky, Selich, and Diggle are absent.
Close session report.
This evening, the city council authorized the city attorney's office to file litigation on behalf of the city against the Orange County Transportation Authority related to the deletion of the 19th Street Bridge from the master plan of arterial highways in order that the Orange County Transportation Authority do appropriate environmental analysis in order to consider appropriate mitigation measures related to the deletion of the bridge.
Thank you. We will have please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Protem Keith Curry and remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Bradley Dienstra of the Newport Harbor Lutheran Church.
Please join me in the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Because we human beings call you by so many different names, we sometimes presume we can make the word "God" mean anything we want it to mean, that we can bend you to our will, that we are able to turn you into whomever we believe might be helpful to us in our pursuit of whatever it is we want most at the moment. We lose any proper sense of reverence when our unchecked desires are allowed to set boundaries around the scope of your power. And once having become used to that, Lord, it is easy to be equally demanding of our elected leaders at every level. It is astonishing how quickly we can become frustrated and angry when we judge the governmental action we want taken on our behalf to be moving at a glacial pace. But you and the people you have placed in positions of authority are not there solely to be at our beck and call, existing merely for the sake of giving us what we ask for right when we think we should have it. So we ask you to forgive us when we think that way. Help us understand that you and those you call to serve you in public office always have to consider the best interests of everyone who is in their care. Our personal agenda might not always match up very well with the one handed out at a city council meeting, but that doesn't mean that what happens is not important. Proclamations and employee recognition send valuable messages of affirmation. Measures dealing with business and property improvements and even floating covers on reservoirs might not seem terribly exciting, but they quite possibly add to the quality of life for all those who call this place home. So give us the patience we need to do the best we can with the often awkward process of living together. Remind each of us that you did not make us to be the center of the universe and that in graciously granting us access to you, you did not cede control to us. Come and be God, not in the mists of transcendence, but in this chamber, and use what happens this night to teach all who gather here a greater trust in your goodness.
Do we have several presentations tonight? If there is an employee rec-- there is no, okay. There's a proclamation for the relay. No, no presentation at all? Oh, all right. Notice to the public.
The city provides a yellow signing card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for council announcements or matters which council members would like place on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Councilman Hill?
Nothing.
Councilman Rozansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Protem Curry?
Well, two weeks ago, I gave a shout out to the 49ers at Long Beach State for the NC2A tournament. Unfortunately, my Niners went one and done in the tournament, but we do have a basketball champion in Southern California, so I'd like to recognize the 2012 NAIA Division National Basketball Champions, our own Concordia Eagles.
All right, go Eagles. The Cronin Del Mar High School, it was built in 1962 and is celebrating their 50th anniversary this year, and I'd like to share with you a proposed project that they have approved and will be underway shortly. The proposed middle school enclave facility is made up of 17 classrooms totaling approximately 34,000 square feet, designed to house the core economic academic classrooms, science rooms, and exploring technology spaces for 7th and 8th grade students in the high school site. The classroom facility is designed to give the middle school student a secure place on campus to call their own and an identity separate from the high school student. There will be a 350-seat theater, black box, music rooms, and supporting classrooms totaling approximately 34,000 square feet, and these are designed to create excellent conditions for drama productions, medium-sized concerts, dance recitals, lectures, and meetings. Both projects are expected to begin in the summer of 2012 and will be completed in approximately 24 months. Additionally, by the conclusion of the above projects, there will be an enhancement to the school's entry with some additional parking, a replacement of the demolished weight room, a revamping of the north parking lot which is adjacent to the pool, and a repurposing modernization of portions of the existing 300 building to transform the existing little theater into a lecture hall and to enhance the adjacent spaces. There's lots of pictures available at the school website, and I encourage you to look at those. It's been a project that had a lot of input from the stakeholders at the school, and they're really pleased that all the funding is in place and the plans have been approved so they can enhance the classroom and academic experience, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hin?
I have nothing.
Councilman Selich?
Nothing.
Well, it's good you guys don't have any, because I've got lots. Double gavel. This one is really neat, though, because this was given to me by Junior Statesman of America, the Cronin Del Mar High School branch. They asked me to come and give a talk, and we had a give-and-take of questions. I'm so impressed. I don't know what you all were doing when you were in high school, but I wasn't paying much attention to civic government, and the questions that they asked and the discussions we had were really good. One of their issues was lowering the voting age, and if I could be sure that everyone of their age was that bright in their voting, I'd be all for it. This, tomorrow night, Wednesday, we are having a review by the, sponsored by the Cronin Del Mar Residents Association, of the fire maps that reflect Buckgully, Morning Canyon, and Newport Coast. I know a lot of you have questions. This will be at 6:30 PM at the Oasis Senior Center, which is in Cronin Del Mar. Also Saturday, the CERTS group, the newest CERT group, who are emergency volunteer respondents in case of disasters, they had their certification out at the Santa Ana Heights Fire Station. We now have over 1,000 CERT volunteers in our city. The only area that's light is Newport Coast. So if you live in Newport Coast, you might want to get your homeowners association involved and get more of your members, your residents, out there enrolled in the project. And then Friday at 3 o'clock in the Back Bay Science Center off of Bayside, Back Bay Road, we will be doing the kickoff for the Wyland Foundation's Water Conservation Challenge. I know Laguna Beach is challenging Newport Beach, and I think Lake Forest is challenging. A number of cities have tried to challenge us. We will prevail, so I want all you to be thinking of what you can do to save water. And finally, we've had, there have been some articles about San Onofre's nuclear generating facility, and I know we're concerned. We're not as concerned as San Clemente, but, so I asked the Edison Company and was told that as far as certain things they have in place, they're overseen by the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, and they are, their inspectors are there 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So that is some comfort. Hopefully, they're doing something besides sleep. And their tsunami wall is the highest, exceeds the height for the, what they expect would be a tsunami in that area. So, of course, it's never, it's always high enough until it's not high enough, but hopefully that will, that will give us some reassurance that they are doing a good job of regulating that, even if some of the tubes were a bit thin. All right, consent calendar.
Consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar, items 1 through 6 are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from their consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor and state their name and item number. If the optional signing card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Thank you. And I forgot one thing. For those of you who live in Cronin Del Mar or on the peninsula and had the planes come over, we have, we know that our police department was informed, and in fact, John Wayne Airport wasn't informed, and we are following up on that to ask that in the future, if they do some kind of flyby like that, that we have some notice. It's not correct, Mr. Seat Manager, thank you. All right. Councilman Diggle?
Nothing to poll, thank you.
Councilman Hin?
None for me.
Councilman Selich?
Nothing.
Councilman Hill?
Nothing.
Councilman Rozansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Protem Curry?
No ads?
And I have none, staff?
No, none, please.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to poll anything from the consent calendar? Oh, may I have a motion?
I move the consent calendar, items 1 through 6.
I'll be voting no on number 3.
Prior to reading the vote, I have to read the titles for items 3 and 4. Once my item, there we go. Item 3 is ordinance number 2012-2, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach approving Plan Community Development Plan Amendment Number PC 2005-002 for the Newport Beach Country Club property located at 1602 East Coast Highway. An ordinance number 2012-3, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach approving Development Agreement Number DA 2008-001 for the Newport Beach Country Club property located at 1602 East Coast Highway. With that, Councilmember Rozansky, the motion carries.
Thank you. And now, public comments.
Public comments are, let's see, are invited on non-agenda items generally to be considered. I'm doing this off the top of my head here. Within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
All right. Does anyone have a comment on a non-agenda item?
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Warren James. I live in Cronin Del Mar. You recently made a decision where you were faced with good memories on one hand and good health on the other. Thank you for making the right decision.
Thank you. Is there other public comment? Careful.
Hi, my name is Christine Lampy of Riverside, California, and I'm here to ask you to help save an historic tall ship, the Shawnee. I know there's been some back and forth wrangling over this, but this is a ship, just not any old ship. It's got a lot of history behind it. It was built in 1916. It's almost a century old. It's one of the oldest wooden-hulled ships in the state of California, the Argus, a 1905 ship that's right now in storage, is one of the oldest, the only older one I know of. This is a nautical treasure that we would like to preserve for future generations, for our children, to see how people sailed, got around on the water, you know, rather than the steel-hulled ships that they have now. It's being restored by Dennis Holland, who's one of the few people who has the knowledge to restore a ship like this. Not many people have the knowledge on how to work on wooden ships, and he's, was the one person who volunteered to save her when she was sinking at her moorings in Newport Harbor. Now, we've, I know, this has been going on for a few years, and we've come in late onto this, but we'd really like to help him save us. We know Dennis from back long when he had the Pilgrim of Newport, named after the city of Newport, and we would sail with him. We would go out on pirate cruises out to Catalina Island. He would teach us to handle the lines, the sails. He would often get children involved with this, and for the kids to see this kind of, you know, ship at work is a very valuable experience. The ship was one of the first few ships to go through the Panama Canal in 1916, just a couple of years after the Panama opened in 1924. It took place in the first transpac race to Tahiti, and it placed third. And during World War II, she was called to duty to help patrol our coast against invaders. So she's a veteran, and should be honored as a veteran. And Dennis Holland first saw this ship in 1953, when he was just eight years old, and fell in love with her then, and had been in touch with the people who owned her off and on. And then when Mr. Adler, who had owned the ship, died in 2002, and Mr. Adler's family was not able to keep up with the maintenance of her, she started sinking in the harbor. So Dennis came and rescued her. I know that he's been ordered to move her from his property. We would just like to encourage that whatever can be done to save this ship be done, and we're willing to try to work with you on this. We're trying to get a lot more people involved so we can help, you know, do fundraising and get people involved to help speed up the processes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there other public comment?
Captain George Cayan Pepper, formerly of Jamaica, now a resident of Joshua Tree, California, who are two of my local professors, are building wooden ships to bring down to the beach to launch in the near future. Before I came here tonight, I spoke to people in Grenoble, France, Milan, Italy, Ohio, and Michigan, and they're all in support of saving this ship. There's not many nautical treasures we can do anything with today because they're beyond repair. Dennis's ship, I looked at it a couple of days ago. It's in pretty sad shape, but we need some time to get it up and get it running, and I've offered to come down and help him, and I hope other people will come down, too. I may have to move in with him and his wife. But Dennis is a, as you say, a champion. A while ago about your ball team, Dennis is the champion for the city. You guys need a treasure so you can brag. Every coastal bay area on this coastline of California to Washington has a ship. The Black Pearl was brought out of hibernation by the studios. It made in, from the Lady Washington for the Pirates of the Caribbean. It made millions of dollars. It's sitting down in Washington State now. Tourists come there about a thousand to see it. The California is in San Diego. Dana Point Dennis built is in, close to Mesa, next-door neighbor. All up the coast, there are wooden ships, and every three years, the Wooden Ship Festival sails into Southern California to show what other nations are doing, and it would be a terrible thing to allow this ship to go out and be crumbled up and burned and destroyed. Thank you again, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Is there other public comment?
There's a pirate night tonight. Do we change?
Well, I don't want to reiterate other things, but I know the bottom line for the city council is you would like to have this ship moved from Newport Beach, but we don't have a problem with that. The bottom line with doing that, though, is the issue of money. We've spoken to Mr. Holland, and he said he is willing to comply with Newport Beach City Council and move the ship to a different location, but he doesn't have the funds to move it. Mayor Gardner had an excellent suggestion in a recent Daily Pilot article when she said that if the people are so intent on saving the boat, why don't they raise the money to do it? Well, we're willing to do that. We're setting up a Save the Shawnee Foundation to raise funds to get the Shawnee moved. I know that Dennis said he is looking at properties in different cities where it would have the room to move it to. If you'll, well, we're willing to raise the funds and get this moved as you wish. All we're asking is if you're willing to give us the time to do it. Now, you've already spent a fortune in legal fees on this issue. Don't waste any more of the city's money. Give us the time, we'll raise the money, and we'll move the ship out of here for you. Of course, if the city's willing to pay for it, we can move it tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think, oh, your name, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry, Michael L. P. Riverside.
Thank you. I think there was another wench or whatever they're called.
My name is Jessica Davis. I'm from Long Beach, California, and I was born in the Panama Canal, not when the ship came through. In talking about the problem with money, fundraising, as Michael mentioned, is not a big deal with the pirate community. We do it all the time. Many of us are connected with the Disney people, and we do their premieres. We do their premieres at the park. We do the premieres at the El Capitan, and we go wherever we're needed. Most of us don't make a dime doing this. We're not going to be making a dime raising money for this ship. When I was a young woman here in Newport Beach and Long Beach, I lived aboard, and there was a ship called the Wandering Lassie, very much like this, a 1917 merchant freighter. I watched the man who could afford to not only buy, restore, but put this back in the water educate children in my neighborhood, educate craftsmen who really wanted to see what the wooden boat looked like, taken apart, put back together again. We don't have historical opportunities now in our education system with the budget the way it is. Something like this is a win-win. Bring the kids down and watch them go. In raising that money, pardon me, you guys have created a big mess with what you want versus what the ship needs versus what a couple of neighbors want. Is there a way to get the neighbors in on this, on the fundraising? Is there a way for city council to work with the pirates, to work with Mr. Holland? And work with us on raising this money? I mean, really? We're a nonprofit organization. As you said, no cost to the city. In building public support for saving the Shawnee, as you mentioned with the tall ships, how many of you have been on a tall ship cruise? Just a sad thing. Just the one? Just the one? You are missing an opportunity. For one thing, you learn about how our country was saved by American privateers. We didn't have a navy. We barely had ships. If it wasn't for our wooden ships, we wouldn't be here. If it wasn't for our wooden ships, we wouldn't be teaching our sailors the fine craft of sailing. And believe me, when you're on a Coast Guard cutter, it comes down to what you know nautically, not how metal that ship is. Newport Beach has always had a great reputation as a nautical community. This is the way to seal the deal, guys. I have nothing else to say other than we need your support in this. We all need to work together. Mr. Holland is doing a fine thing. He needs the time. He needs the help. He needs the consideration of the city council and his neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there, please come forward. Do you have Johnny Depp, too? Then we won't have to worry about the fundraising, huh?
Good evening. My name's Ron Stackwitz, aka Orderless Eye. Not in guard. Driving in here, I live in San Diego, but I have a lot of tall ships, and there aren't that many left out there. And, you know, we're talking about history. We're talking about a legacy that would be left behind, and we're talking about heritage here. And it would be a real shame if it's lost, if he's forced to move it right away, because it's in a shape right now, and I just saw it myself. It's in a shape right now that it would fall apart. We really need a little bit of time to, like you've heard everybody else say, raise some funds in order to get the ship in a shape enough to be able to move her. I would be, I would say that Newport Beach could be really proud of herself if she was able to put a sign out there that says, "The Shawnee, the pride of Newport Beach," you know? That would speak volumes about this community. But from what I've been hearing, it seems like it's been kind of going the other direction, and, you know, I think that can be turned around, you know? Because somebody was like doing a prayer earlier and said, "You know, it's not about us or one person, and in this case, not one neighbor either." Shouldn't be, you know? I think love thy neighbor's kind of been, you know, gleaned over and forgotten about, and it seems to be more about money and greed and selfishness, and it's like, you know, there used to be communities that used to raise bond kind of thing, and they'd get together and help each other. And, you know, the pirate community is doing that for Dennis Holland and for this ship. And it's part of our lifestyle. We love it, and, you know, there's a lot of us out here in the United States, not just a few people in costume here. We're not kooks. We're for real. And we go out there and perform for people. We love people, and we love tall ships. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there other public comment? Seeing none, oh.
My name is Candace Probes, and I'm an anthropologist, and I've been fighting for years to try and preserve things around Orange County, mostly Indian villages and graveyards, and I've seen so many, so many things destroyed, and this is another opportunity to try and save our past. And I'm also an educator, and to see children experience the past is also very rewarding. And I just wanted to say, you know, put in my two cents' worth as far as, you know, my experience as saving the past is very important because we need to see where we've been. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? You're out of costume.
Yes, yes. Mayor Gardner and members of the council. My name is Jim Mojer. I don't know how to make this transition, but there's a matter I've been meaning to bring up to you on an evening when your agenda was not too full, and with the exception of pirates, this would seem to be such an evening. What I wanted to talk to you about is the part of our city near the airport that is north of Bristol Street and south of campus. Past councils annexed that area in 1959 and 1970. When they did so, they probably saw it as a commercial and light industrial area and had no notion that anybody would ever be planning to live there. But times change, and whether by plan or in order to fulfill state housing mandates, a large portion of that area is now slated for residential development. The first phase is called Uptown Newport, and it's already in the environmental planning phase, and it appears that eventually thousands of people are going to be living in that area. The problem is although that it is part of Newport Beach, no one ever thought to remove that from the Santa Ana School District, which is what it is currently in. I know nothing at all bad about Santa Ana schools, but with the exception of a little bit of Newport Coast, this would be the only part of our city in which the kids are in a different school district than the rest. All I wanted to suggest is that my understanding is it's very difficult to change school district boundaries politically, but now, before that area is developed, would seem like an ideal opportunity for this city to try to be proactive and approach those two school districts and see if this oversight from 50 years ago could be corrected. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there other, any other public comment? You only have one bite at the apple, sorry. No, sorry. Any other public comment? All right. Thank you very much. Oh, please, let's, if you are going to speak. All right. All right, good. Thank you, thank you very much. I appreciate your coming down. I have to tell you that, I'm sorry, my favorite pirate is, Robert Newton is Long John Silver, which probably is. All right, thank you. We do not comment essentially on public comment because they're not agenda items, so we are not going to have a discussion. I hope you understand that at this point. All right, on to public hearings. Oral reports, sorry. I'm retrying things along. Councilman Diggle?
Yes, our aviation, Citizens Aviation Committee met yesterday. I currently chair the committee, and for those of you that are interested in attending, we meet the last Monday of each month at 8:00 AM in the Friends Room at the Central Library. And at our meeting yesterday, we discussed the following. Our city manager, Dave Kiff, briefed the committee concerning the progress of our discussions with the county concerning the extension of the JWA settlement agreement, and as reported by Mr. Kiff, the talks are progressing positively. The committee also discussed the current attempts by the City of Ontario to obtain local and independent control. local and independent control of the Ontario International Airport, which is currently under control of the Los Angeles Airport Authority, or LAUA. The committee recommended that the city send a letter supporting Ontario's bid for local control of the airport. And the statistics, the operational statistics for John Wayne for January, February 2012, essentially the same as last year in terms of the number of passengers utilizing the airport. And if you want more information on our committee, you can always go to our city website or contact the city manager. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hinn?
I have two committee reports. The Balboa Village Citizens Advisory Panel met on Tuesday, March 20. Two main agenda items. One was to provide the group an update on the subcommittee that's working on the brand promise for Balboa Village. And I'm hoping that we're going to have something finished up on that shortly. There is a survey that is being circulated to get broader citizen input on that brand promise. And so you may receive something like that, and I hope that you do fill it out. It's an online survey. With regard to the other agenda item, it was, had to do with the parking management plan for Balboa Village, in which the Citizens Advisory Panel completed their set of recommendations regarding that parking plan. That'll be set aside for the moment while the group finishes its work on the vision and the brand promise and the economic development recommendations for the area. Those will be handled at upcoming meetings. And then on March 21st, the Tidestones Management Committee met. We had four agenda items. One was on Buck Gully runoff. This is water, excess water that runs down from Buck Gully on and through our beach. We also had an interesting discussion and presentation on the Seminique and Newport slough. These are sloughs that are, sort of go around Newport shores, connecting up to the Santa Ana River. And apparently, the Army Corps has found money to do some dredging on its portion of the slough. And now the city needs to assess whether or not it can move forward with dredging on the city's portion of the sloughs, particularly given the fact that this would be a very good time in terms of cost to piggyback on the Army Corps' project. And then we also had a discussion about Linda Isle, and that is the inner lagoon of Linda Isle, which has silted up and which requires dredging. And we had an interesting presentation from the Homeowner Association of Linda Isle. And once again, we have an opportunity, perhaps, for there to be very cost-effective dredging and to solve that problem, and perhaps also provide some public benefit in the form of Eelgrass Reserve Bank. So both of those items will be coming back at future Tidestones Committee meetings for further consideration. And then the, we also had a report from the Citizens Advisory Panel updating the Tidestones Master Plan. This is a 10-year master plan of capital projects that we hope to conclude on in the next month or two at the Tidestones Committee for Recommendation to Council for Consideration. It's an essential part of what we're doing here to manage the bay to a better outcome over time. And that is it.
Thank you. Councilman Selich?
No reports.
Councilman Hill?
No reports this evening.
Councilman Rosansky?
No reports, thank you.
Mayor Potem Curry?
No report, but I want to acknowledge the presence of a class from Whittier Law School, I think, is here to make sure we don't break the law.
So tell us about the Brown Act. Huh? Okay. And I have no reports. All right, now we'll go to the public hearings. The Beach Point Laundromat.
Good evening, Mayor Gardner, members of the council, for Nueno Planning Department, Division, sorry. The application is a general plan amendment, coastal land use plan amendment, and zoning code amendment to change the zoning designation of the property from two-unit residential to visitor-serving commercial. Property is located on the corner of 30th and Balboa Boulevard. The property has been zoned for residential use but developed with commercial for over 50 years. Recent ordinances have required that commercial uses in residential zones are required to be abated. So the property owner is proposing to, sorry, proposing these amendments in order to retain the commercial land use. And the existing laundromat is a use that serves visitors to the area and residents. The Planning Commission recommended city council approval at their hearing on February 9.
Any questions for staff? Is there public comment on this item? When you get up there, you'll see the box.
Thank you. I'm Denise Fenton, the wife of the owner of the laundry. I've been married to him for over 25 years. And I just want you to know, five out of seven days, my husband is there cleaning the laundry. I've even checked on him sometimes, and he's there cleaning the laundry, taking care of the people that are in there, making sure that, that the machines and everything are nice and clean. I've heard all the stories that he bought the laundry when he was 19 years old instead of buying a flashy car to impress the girls in high school. And he's been very proud and loved his laundry ever since. He's owned it for 54 years. And oftentimes, when I'm there to clean the laundry with him, or when I'm there with him, he, I have a lot of people approaching me lately saying, "What are we going to do if they close this laundry down?" A few years back, when sewer and water charges became untenable for a lot of laundry owners, they all closed down. They said, "This is the only laundry we have. What are we going to do?" So I just wanted to put in my two cents and say, "Proud of my husband. He has a nice laundry. He's taken good care of it over the years. And through my sacrifice, he purchased it while he was young, and he's maintained it ever since. Thank you very much."
I think you're embarrassing him. Any other public comment? All right, I'll bring it back to council. Do I have a...
Move the item.
There's a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the titles for the resolution and ordinance. Resolution Number 2012-25, a resolution of the city council of the City of Newport Beach, approving general plan amendment number GP 2011-010, and coastal land use plan amendment LC 2011-006, for property located at 230th Street, and ordinance number 2012-10, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Newport Beach, approving zoning code amendment number CA 2011-013, to change the zoning designation of property located at 230th Street. With that, the motion carries unanimously.
Okay. High defenses, hedges, walls, and retaining walls.
Mayor, members of the city council, this is really the first of several planned cleanup amendments to the zoning code. As you may recall, back in 2010, really starting in 2007, we initiated and completed a zone, comprehensive updated zoning code. So at this point in time, what we have is a circumstance where we've got existing provisions that were changed with the update. It's created an issue where some fences and hedges and walls are a little bit tall. It really affects areas in low-lying areas. And I really want to preface my comments as I, as I move forward in the presentation, if I say the word fences, I'm really dealing with fences, hedges, and walls. They're all regulated consistently into the same provisions. And when I refer to low-lying areas, it's really areas that are below nine foot in the North American vertical datum, which in low-lying areas, it's principally Balboa Island, Balboa Peninsula, and West Newport. Now, in those areas, the building code requires that the houses are actually, the finished slabs are raised to that elevation. And what the zoning code did was that we actually changed the baseline for measuring height to that elevation. So in essence, if you have a property that's at six feet, you can end up with a nine-foot-high property line in the side yards and eight-foot-high walls potentially in the front yard. We actually had a, the circumstances has been a, it's on topaz. The property is actually filling three feet here, and this is that nine-foot elevation. And this is a six-foot-high side yard fence here. So there was some concern, so we took a look at this item, and we're proposing some amendments and changes to alleviate some of these conditions. This is the other side property line. Again, the nine-foot elevation is here, and this is a six-foot-high fence in the side yard. In this particular development, they're actually filling this property up three feet to that nine-foot elevation, so they can achieve a design where the outside spaces are at the same elevation as the inside spaces. So it's kind of a design change that's occurring. A lot of people want that type of a design, and allowing the fences and hedges here to be measured at that point kind of helps facilitate that design. And that was really the reason why it was done. But again, we've got these circumstances now where we have nine-foot-high fences, and what we'd like to do is propose some changes to the code, amending section 20, 30, 40. There's a variety of clarifying changes to ensure internal consistency. But the change in standard would really be that no fence would be higher than nine feet from existing grade, which is consistent with this picture here. Again, nine feet would be the maximum height. It also would be not, no higher than nine feet from the grade of the abutting lot. It would also be no higher than six feet from the finished grade. So if you do indeed fill your property, it would be no higher than six feet. And additionally, there would be a 60% open or transparent area above six feet. So what would happen is the area above six feet, which is about here, again, six feet from the existing grade, so the upper three feet would be 60% open. And the hope there is, is that would provide additional light, air, and ventilation through the fence to, so that the side yards don't become too dark.
Now, if the lots are stepped, as they are sometimes, so my, if I'm on this, I'm on the higher lot, and I'm not supposed to be higher than nine feet from this lot also, so I would really be six feet?
The proposed ordinance would actually require that the fence meet all of those standards. So it would be no higher than six feet from the existing grade of the lot that you're on. Again, back to this picture. If this is about six, it would be no higher than nine feet from the six. It would also be no higher than nine feet from the grade on the adjacent lot. That lot might be lower. If it's a foot lower than this lot, we typically don't see anything much lower than about five foot eight. That's the lowest I've seen. But you could have a property here that's at seven, and the neighboring lot's in six, and so you're going to have a 10-foot-high wall in that circumstance. So what we ended up doing is saying nine feet from the existing grade of the property, nine feet from the abutting grade. So in no case would a wall ever be higher than nine feet. It would be no more than six feet to the raised grade. So if you're raising grade two feet, you would have a six-foot-high fence on top of the two-foot, and you'd only be left with an eight-foot-high fence to your neighbor. And then we'd have anything above six feet, this upper three feet here, be 60% open. And so it would, you would never have a fence higher than nine feet. It would also be no higher than six feet to the proposed grade. I realize that they were adding like four standards to it. It has to comply with all four. So, yes?
How does the city propose to handle existing walls, hedges, fences that are currently, currently exceed this height?
Well, there really aren't that many. This would probably be the one non-conforming fence, if you will, because it doesn't have the 60% open space up above. There may be a few that are in the pipeline that have been permitted consistent with this standard, which is consistent with the current code. But in a residential property, our standard has always been six feet from the existing grade, which would never have made this wall this tall.
Okay. So how do you propose to handle existing ones out there?
Well, this one here would be allowed to stay there until it would be removed.
So they'll be grandfathered in?
It would be grandfathered in, yes.
And then are there perhaps, though, fences and hedges, walls that would exceed that height where there's good reasons for that?
Well, there are some circumstances that are, would have good reason. In fact, we accounted for that in the zoning code update, where we actually allowed fences, hedges, and walls to be eight feet in height in the side yard when they abut a commercial property or a commercial alley. So this provision really wouldn't affect that area. So that's where we felt that through the update, that that would be an appropriate place to potentially have a higher fence. There may be other unique circumstances that would be reviewed on a case-by-case basis through a modification permit or a variance application. And there are some of those out there in the community today that would not be non-conforming because they were authorized through that process. So I hope that answers your question.
So non-conforming would be grandfathered in?
Yeah, this one here would be grandfathered in.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hinn? Councilman Hill?
Remind me of the height requirement for the adjoining lot for a swimming pool. Swimming pool, there's a, there's a height requirement for the fence on the lot adjoining the lot that has the pool. Isn't that...
Yes, there is a pool protection fence requirement. It's embodied in the building code and not the zoning code. The zoning code would allow the fence or wall to be in the side yard. It's really a five-foot-high fence for pool protection, and it's really around the fence. You can satisfy that requirement by having the entire yard fenced off with proper gating. So the fences that the zoning code would allow would satisfy that requirement.
So there could be a condition where a fence would be required to be taller than nine feet?
I don't believe there would ever be that circumstance.
The fence on my property is 12 feet tall in order to meet the five-foot requirement on my neighbor's property?
Well, it's an existing condition. It may be a non-conforming fence, but ultimately, when you do fencing, you, in the past, we've been measuring them from the existing grade of the property, so that higher, a property's at a higher grade. And so it would be allowable to have that fence at that height. Five feet on that property, you know, your property's obviously seven feet lower than that property. Now, these particular provisions really only materialize in areas that are with grades that are lower than nine feet. So I want to stress that the fences in other areas where, you know, you're at a much higher elevation in your neighborhood, or in Corona del Mar, if you will, these will not affect those neighborhoods one bit. The only way that these provisions are triggered is if you're raising the grade in those low-lying areas. So again, if you're at a higher elevation, you're going to be left with a six-foot-high fence. The limitation of nine feet would not be applicable. So in your circumstance, your neighbor can build their pool protection fence, or even have a six-foot-high fence if they wanted one. And then your property is just lower, and that's the circumstance that you'll be left with, and it would, it's currently allowable, and the disordered change wouldn't affect the ability to do that.
But the top would still have to be, the top three feet would still have to provide the 60% openness?
No, it wouldn't. It actually, this provision really only is triggered when you're raising the grade up in a low-lying area.
Oh, okay, all right.
So in that higher area, you would be allowed a six-foot-high fence. There's no open space requirement that would be applicable. You could never achieve the nine-foot-high fence on that property.
Okay.
The adjacent lower grade, though, would be looking at a higher fence, unfortunately. There's no other questions on side yards. I'll move to front yards. We're looking at those a little bit differently. In changing the baseline for measuring height to nine feet, we have a current allowance for a five-foot-high fence in the front yard. And when we look at the low-lying areas, we look at Balboa Island and the peninsula, you know, we've got some low fences out there that are typically three to three and a half feet high. Having an eight-foot-high fence right at the back of the sidewalk is something that I think we want to try to avoid. It really is a little out of character for the community. And so the ordinance simply just changes it back to the existing grade, and you can then still build the same fence that you could build prior to the zoning code update. This is actually a sketch that's been in our zoning code for quite a number of years. We carried forward the same sketch in the new update. So basically, it's measured from existing grade, and so where you've got circumstances where you've got a higher grade in Corona del Mar, you have to create this design. Now, if you're on Balboa Island and you're raising the grade, what will happen is that design will be required. So if you wanted to raise your property three feet in order to have your property the same height as your finished floor, you're going to have to step back that, that upper level here, and then you provide typically a landscape planner in this, this two-foot area here. And so what it does is that it makes all the fences start to look exactly like this, and it's a consistent citywide standard at that point in time. So this particular sketch is not changing. We're also amending section 20, 30, 60, which is really, this is sort of a related section, and they rely upon one another. And to ensure internal consistency between these provisions, we're making some changes to this particular section. First big change is really to change the term from finished floor to finished slab. Top of slab is really the term that's used by the flood insurance rate maps on Balboa Island. You have to build your habitable living area at that elevation. It doesn't apply to garages. So we're just changing the name to be consistent with that standard. We're specifying that the height of the fences is pursuant to the provisions that I just discussed. discussed. And the height of accessories, other accessory structures are measured from that same elevation. And this really only addresses barbecues and other structures that might be sitting on that raised patio. It wouldn't really apply to any buildings, because they would have to comply with the setback standards, which would have a 24-foot height limit. So in essence, this section here is, amendment is necessary to ensure internal consistency. Our recommendation is obviously to conduct a public hearing, recommend, it looks like something from the Planning Commission. We're actually asking the city council to introduce the ordinance in this particular case. There are several alternatives that we can discuss. You know, you can obviously do no change, and then the fences that were, that were shown in the photograph would be allowed, potentially eight-foot-high fences in the front yard. I don't anticipate too many of those actually occurring, but I, I do believe we do need to kind of make the code changes to avoid those potential undesirable design effects. We can discuss whether or not you want to go to a six-foot-high fence versus nine-foot, or you can change the open space requirement we're suggesting, which is 60%, and maybe choose a different percentage. Could go to 40 or 50%. We're recommending 60% to really open up those side yards. Be happy to answer any questions if the council has any.
All right. Councilman Selich?
Yeah, I'm the one that requested that we initiate this ordinance. We've got issues in Balboa Island where we're requiring the pads to be raised because of FEMA requirements and creating these situations as shown in the slide on the screen. And I think this does the trick, so I'd move the action to introduce the ordinance.
All right. Do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, is there any discussion with council? Please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the title of ordinance number 2012-11, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, approving code amendment number CA 2012-001 regarding the height of fences, hedges, walls, and retaining walls. With that, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And now we'll move to current business. The appointment to fill the vacancy in the Coastal Bay Water Quality Committee. Councilman Hill has appointed.
George Robertson.
Yes, is there a motion?
I would, I would second.
All right. Is there any public comment on this appointment?
Now, George drives the ship for the sanitation district. Is that true? I think he does.
His official title is quite long, but he is the Senior Scientist for Water Quality Control and Environmental Compliance for the Orange County Sanitation District. Very knowledgeable individual, long history in Newport, former seasonal lifeguard, and very, wants to be very active in the community.
Good. Please vote.
Councilmember Rosansky. The motion carries unanimously.
And now we're going to make appointments to the Aviation Committee. We have, do we take these one at a time?
No, you can take it as a.
All right. We have Councilman Henn appointing Kay Mortensen, and Councilman Hill appointing Bonnie O'Neill. And Councilwoman Daigle?
Yeah, well, we, at the last meeting, we appointed Thomas Meng for, is that correct?
As your representative?
Right, swimming alternate. We didn't receive additional applications, so I would ask the clerk to re-advertise for the district board.
So we'll just do the two?
I think so.
All right. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there public comment on these appointments? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Motion for reconsideration?
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Is there any motion for reconsideration? Then we stand adjourned. You guys came to a good meeting. We got out early.